Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November regular board meeting for Seneca County Board of Supervisors. Margaret, roll call, please.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Here.
Supervisor Garlick Lawrenceetti?
Here.
Supervisor Brownell?
Here.
Supervisor Davidson? Supervisor Proudy?
Here.
Supervisor Kaiser?
Here.
Supervisor Lizarro?
Kaiser.
Supervisor Cronenwetter?
Here.
Supervisor La?
Here.
Supervisor McGreevy?
Here.
Supervisor Heisen?
Oh, here.
Supervisor Trout?
Here.
Supervisor Shipley?
Here.
Supervisor Hakadog?
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people who work for this nation, one nation under God, neither of the principles with liberty, peace, and justice of all. Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda tonight is some presentations. First, I'll call on Randall Shepherd from the Bonneville Group. Randy, good evening, and thanks for all your hard work the past few months. Give us an update, where are you staying?
Will do, thank you. And if you don't mind, I do want to, before I can start, I do want to thank some of the staff here at the county, because this was a long process. But along with my staff, we had Megan Anderson, there's a few individuals that kind of did help us get through this process, so Tina Marie Beckman, Ben Angel Parker, Meredith Olverston, and Shersey Coleman did a great job helping us get through the information side, want to recognize that publicly, and then when Haley got on board, she jumped right in as well and helped us get this wrapped up, so thank you for letting me say that. In front of you, we hand out two documents, one of them is a recorded communications letter, and then the big document, the financial statements themselves. The recorded communication letter, I'll just summarize, I'll walk through quickly, it covers certain areas of communication, obviously, that we need to present to the board. The first of which talks about accounting practices, and just the fact that there was no new accounting practices in place in the county this year, there's no transactions entered into the county that did not have any kind of authoritative guidance. It talks about, at the top of page two, that there are certain estimates in your financial statements that are typical, and we look at the assumptions and we make sure that they're reasonable, related to compensated absences, depreciation expense, as well as the net pension asset or liability, excuse me. And then, we also look at certain disclosures that might be considered sensitive, in this case, we've not identified any that would be considered sensitive. The next category talks about difficulties encountered in performing the audit, and as you know, we're sitting here in November, so it did take us quite a while to close 2017, you know, with a number of books and records that had to be cleaned up, and a number of entries that we recorded in connection with that, which delayed this presentation. Corrected or uncorrected misstatements attached to your letter, there are some adjustments that we booked, specifically related to closing the water fund, adjustment to the workers' compensation fund, and some entries related to sort of water. And then the last page talks about, sorry, the last two pages talks about, in exhibit B, what we call uncorrected misstatements, so these were errors that we identified that were not material, and so we elected to not record those, and allow those to correct through in the next year, which is typical in situations like this, so those are identified. And then lastly, in exhibit C, we booked a number of prior pre-adjustments to the county's books, and those are identified below, one of them relates to the tobacco asset securitization corp, that audit we picked up this year, and when we did that, we identified some errors the prior auditor had made, so we had to make those adjustments for that audit. And then, the other adjustments relate to the county, and the various funds, primarily related to grant recognition, which we've talked about at the other meeting that I was, that I came to. So that's kind of a summary of some of the main points. If you look at the main financial statements, the large document, there's just a couple pages I want to focus on or identify to you. The first of which is the opinion, which is on page one, on that cover pages one, two, three, and the opinion that we issue, and it's summarized on page two, is an unmodified opinion, it's a clean audit opinion, so that's what we hope to achieve at the end of the day, which we did, but we do identify in that next paragraph, correction of an error, that we did identify errors in the financials which we corrected. So, you know, there were significant adjustments that we talked about, but at the end of the day, the numbers that are presented, and our opinions are fairly presented in all material respects. The other thing to point out, I think if you look at page sixty-five, and then sixty-five, sixty-six, and sixty-seven, the reason I want to point these out to you is these identify what we consider the material weaknesses in the control structure, and we're required to report these in accordance with the Federal Single Audit Act. So we identify, we have five of them, that we identify, the first of which relates to county capital asset accounting, because we had a number of adjustments to properly state the capital asset records in the airport fund, the water fund, and sewer fund, we identified the impact of those adjustments, you know, that was considered a material weakness. The second one related to fund balance or net position, you know, the fact that we had so many significant adjustments to book, many of which impacted net position, some impacted prior year, you know, and you can see under the effect, certain funds were overstated by 370,000, capital projects was overstated by 122, and so those errors were not identified, you know, the normal course of business with accounting. At the top of page sixty-eight, you know, the third finding relates to due to federal and state governments, so we identified adjustments totaling more than a million dollars, related to properly recording receivables. If you recall, you know, some of those dollars that we identified were items that had not even been vouchered by the county, so had we not done the procedures, there were expenditures over a year old that hadn't even been vouchered, so that's a significant error that we need to make sure is cleaned up going forward. The fourth item relates to the preparation of financial statements and the schedule of expenditures for federal awards, you know, this, as you can tell, this document's maybe some pages long, there's a lot there, you know, where we were a month ago, we really didn't have anybody on staff with the sophistication to be able to prepare this document, and we as owners need to assess that. You know, we're confident going forward that, you know, you have so many in place to do that, we'll put them to make sure they understand the contents. Now, are they actually required to repair this whole thing? No, but we need to understand what's in there, why it's in there, and be able to identify errors. And then lastly, we identify account reconciliations, you know, the biggest thing we identified this year was bank recs that had not been done for the entire year, so that was really a critical area for the county to focus on, get procedures in place, you know, cash is a significant asset, and you need to be aware of where you are at all points in time, and making sure that all of those accounts are reconciled throughout that process. So, again, with that, now I know I went through it quickly, but if there's any comments or any questions that the board can handle, we have to address this.
Are there any questions by the Board of Supervisors? Supervisor Lawrenceetti?
Yes, does this report go on to the State Controller's Office?
Oh, yeah, this report itself does not, but I did forget to mention, we did issue an amended annual update document to the State Controller's Office that was filed on November 2nd, so they do have that, which incorporates all the changes from this document into what they have. So, and then today, we also filed with the Federal Audit Clearing House this single audit document, which was also a requirement, which was due by 9:30, obviously, we couldn't get that done until the statements were completed, but that got filed today as well, so all of your filing requirements with respect to seventeen have been satisfied at this point in time.
Supervisor?
Dave, it's good enough. Mr. Kaiser. Hey, how are we, how are you going with the eighteen?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. We did meet on the Saturday noon, we were here at three o'clock and met with all management staff to kind of talk through the approach, so we've talked through all the areas that we had issues with last year, reconciliations, accounts payable, et cetera, and we talked about a game plan to be working on that immediately. We're going to work in concert with management in terms of, you know, talking them through what we did, allowing them to kind of make some corrections, we're going to review that, again, to try to minimize the cost to the county, because I think you've got some folks here that can take that over, but we're going to work on identifying those before year-end.
So some of the ending numbers here will change?
These numbers will not change.
These will?
Right, these numbers are set, so what we're going to be doing is making the corrections from 1118 through the present time.
Supervisor Lizarro?
Thank you, sir. Will this affect any credit ratings?
Uh, no, because you have an unmodified opinion, that's primarily what the credit rating agencies are focused on, the fact that you did not file a tiling for the single audit purposes, they may question and wonder why that happened, but I, again, I'm not a credit analyst, so I don't know for sure, but my belief would be that that wouldn't negatively impact you unless it was a pattern, you know, if it was year after year, I think that would then start impacting you, but I think in this year, you've got a, you know, rationale and an explanation, if you go with bonding, you know, why that may have happened.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Supervisor Lawrenceetti?
So do we have a total figure of what this, the audits cost for 2017? Do you have a final figure yet?
Um, I did not bring that with me.
Okay, maybe the next time.
Yep, I can provide that either to the chairman or to Mr. Reynolds, I have to provide to the board.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Randy, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Getting this right up to speed.
Thank you.
Okay, next, from Pathway Home on the Finger Lakes, Marty Shields, Marty?
Hello?
Good evening.
Um, I'm Marty Shields, I'm the executive director of Pathway Home, we are a comfort care home located up the road on 414 in Seneca Falls, this is Beth Thankey, she's my assistant director. We just wanted to come and do an update of where we have been over the last year. For those of you who don't know, we're a nonprofit whose staff and a group of very dedicated trained volunteers from the community provide an extended family of caregivers for two individuals at a time who are on hospice services. We focus on their comfort and enhancing their quality of life. Not only do we provide the physical care that they need, by, needed by those individuals at the end of life, but we are also there to support their family. One of the most important aspects of our work is providing families with the knowledge and resources to help them understand and navigate the dying process of their loved one, and that guidance helps to alleviate the fear and apprehension they experience. And whenever we have the opportunity, we extend that same education to the greater community by taking, talking with groups such as Broderick, Juana's, talking with churches and partnering with the United Way. So since this time last year, we've cared for 21 families, so in a year's time, we've taken care of 21 families, since we opened in March of 2017, we have served 50 families, the majority of them coming from Seneca County, but we've also cared for people from Ontario and Wayne Counties. We take pride in providing a very warm and comfortable atmosphere for our families. We encourage our families to just come and be themselves, use the house as they see fit, and treat it like their own. So, we've learned, we've earned a good reputation, not only in the community at large, but in the medical community that we work directly with. We recently had a resident tell us he chose to come to us, he had a, he had a choice between us and another home, and he came, he came, he chose to come to us because he knew somebody that we had cared for last year, and he was impressed with the care he received. This summer, we held our first celebration of life in Butterfly Village to honor our residents in June. Given that our community had suffered a number of tragic losses in the recent, recent months prior to that, we decided to open it to the public. We were completely overwhelmed with the response and the attendance to the ceremony that day. So the cost of caring for one resident is about $250 a day. That includes staffing, insurances, the cost of running a typical household, our mortgage, utilities, maintenance, groceries, household necessities. Our residents or our families are not charged for the care they receive. We talk about the cost of care with them, and families donate what they're able to do, some people are able to write a large check, other people are not. We get donations of goods from the food pantries from some families because that's what they can provide. We don't receive any reimbursement from insurances or hospice. Our funding is dependent on a number of things. Our board and our staff work very hard to raise revenue with our fundraising activities, but this only covers a portion of operational budget. Donations from businesses and individuals help to make up some of the monies needed for operational expenses. Donations of goods and services are expenses that we don't have to incur. Indirect public support, such as our contract with the county, and our partnership with the United Way, and other various grants also help fill that gap. We are focusing on our sustainability by continuing our traditional fundraising events and launching a new annual corporate sponsorship program along with our annual appeal. We've appreciated the support the county has shown us in the last two years, and we hope that we can continue to count on your support in the future. We also hope that you will consider increasing your contribution, if not this year, but in future years, as our services are highly needed in this area. So, that's my little speech. Does anybody have any questions?
Supervisor Kaiser?
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, just questioning, you probably already said, but is this staff voluntarily?
No. The home is staffed from seven in the morning until 11 o'clock at night with volunteers. Beth and I are salaried, we're the only full-time people there, we cover when there is no volunteers there. We have paid night people because it's very difficult to get night people, or people to volunteer to work that 11:00 shift, but they are all part-time people. And I have to say that those people that we pay to work that overnight shift, they come in and volunteer above and beyond what we pay them. We have, what, about thirty? Thirty. Very dedicated volunteers, people from the community, we have families that have, we have served, have come back and have donated their time. We just did three recent classes for volunteer training in Han, and we've got ten or twelve new volunteers, three of them nursing students, one of them a mother-daughter pair who, we took care of their mother a year ago, so the granddaughter, she's 17, she's at the junior high school, and she brings in volunteers with us, so she comes up and does it.
Anybody else? Well, Marty and Beth, thank you very much for the service that you, you and your volunteers provide.
Thank you.
Okay, next matter would be open privilege of the floor, is there anyone here tonight that would like to, hello, Brian?
Hello.
Step forward, state your name, where you live.
Good evening, my name is Brian Preston, and I'm a lifelong resident of Seneca County. I'd first like to thank the board, I, for your commitment and your service to the county, and I truly, I truly admire it, and I appreciate it, so thank you. Two weeks ago, I attended a meeting sponsored by the IDA, and one of the major concerns at this meeting was infrastructure in Seneca County, so that is what I would like to address tonight. Seneca County is no longer going to be the trash capital of the northeastern United States without adequately being compensated for it. I urge the county to put a 20% value-added tax on every ton of trash entering Seneca County. I want you to grab a pen and write this down, because I want you to see it, and I want you to hear it. A 20% value-added tax, based on a $60 a ton tipping fee, has the potential to generate $62,500 a day. It has the potential to generate 3,000, or excuse me, 312,050 dollars a month, or excuse me, a week, and it has the potential to generate $16,250,000, paid for by the people who have the luxury of sending their trash to our home. This $16,250,000 would be put in a dedicated fund solely for infrastructure. There is no reason Seneca County cannot have the best water treatment, sewer treatment, and infrastructure in the entire state of New York, paid for by the people who have the luxury of sending their trash to our home. I realize some of you are going to think I'm foolish for suggesting a 20% value-added tax, some of you are going to say that we can't do this, and some of you will even say we won't do this. I actually came up with a better idea than a value-added tax, and I think the county set a precedent when they put a 3% occupancy tax on hotel rooms, which currently generates $432,000 a year, congratulations, that's a pretty smart move. So we will not call this a value-added tax, it will be a 20% occupancy tax on trash, which has the potential to generate $16,250,000, paid for by the people who have the luxury of sending their trash to our home. Do you know the only thing difference between a 20% occupancy tax on trash and a 3% occupancy trash tax on motel rooms? The guests officially leave, and so will I. Thank you, have a good night, and God bless America.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Well, there you go. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board this evening? Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Chief Kainstra, I work for the Seneca Falls Police Department, and I'm here to speak briefly with all of you about the open position you have in the emergency management position, because this does affect our agency in our town. I cannot, I am here in full support of hiring Melissa Taylor for that position, and that is based on her past experience with myself and the town and everything she's done for this county. Prior to her taking charge of the emergency management position, I felt that that position through my entire career was fire management. It was driven strictly towards the fire department, I didn't actually know that emergency management position was there for all emergency services in Seneca County. Once Melissa took over, she has proven that this position is an asset to my position in helping me through different disasters that have occurred, different events that occur in our town, providing grant opportunities that helps our agency in the town of Seneca Falls, she has been an enormous asset to, to my position in the town of Seneca Falls, and I just want to express to the Supervisors and Chairman that I highly recommend hiring her back. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Randy, come forward.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Supervisors, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Tony Giovanni, and I am a village owner resident, and I am currently acting director of the Office of Emergency Management. You have an opportunity to bring Melissa Taylor back to Seneca County, and I'm asking that you act on this opportunity. Melissa and I were working on building up the emergency management office, her goal was to develop a strong emergency management program in Seneca County, and she went to work on that goal from the very beginning with a positive attitude, ambition, and an eye toward the future. Her strong pursuit for grant funding, together with her desire to seek accreditation for both emergency management and 911, demonstrate that commitment. Her departure was a huge setback for the department, and placed quite a large burden on Randy, Jeff, and I as we scrambled to divide up the work and learn new tasks. It took three people to fill her shoes. Not long after Melissa's departure, the August 14th flood occurred, Melissa would have been a huge asset to our county during this disaster. She had experience working as an emergency manager during one of the worst disasters in U.S. history, and she knows how to handle a presidential disaster declaration firsthand. Going through a presidential disaster declaration without her expertise definitely made a bad situation worse. It was stressful and difficult, and we barely ate or slept for the first few days, but we pushed through the difficult times and did our best by learning day by, day after day. The work related to this disaster is far from over as we continue with recovery. It would certainly be a relief for all of us if you would bring back our experienced emergency manager. I don't know who else you are considering for this position, or if you are even considering anyone else, but I do know this, there is literally no one in the world that is more qualified than Melissa. The only thing I'd have to say to her is here's where we are, here's where we're at with the flood. Melissa has a degree in emergency management, and has over a decade of experience working as an emergency manager. She is currently working as an emergency manager at one of the largest airports in the world, that should say something. She has built lasting relationships with our county and state partners and key stakeholders. She knows our county, she knows our financial system and our grants. She is well-respected in the public safety community at both the state and local levels, and I heard it time and time again from people, after her departure, of how many people respected her, and continue to respect her. She understands what a true emergency management department should be, and she has the courage, determination, and ambition to make Seneca County's emergency management department the best that it can be. She is fair and just and integral to our department, and I would ask that you please make every effort to bring her back home to Seneca County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Tony, thank you for all you've done since Melissa left.
Thank you.
And you were truly baptism by fire.
It was, but thank you, I appreciated the opportunity, it was a, it was a great learning experience, but definitely would love to have her by my side.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, next matter of business is approval of the meeting minutes for the regular board meeting of September 11th and October 23rd. Have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh? That's passed. Next, reports of standing committees. First, I'll call on Supervisor Ron McGreevy, Health and Human Services, Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Human Services Committee met on Tuesday, October 3rd, and the committee approved several resolutions which appear on the agenda this evening. For the Office for the Aging, there is a resolution authorizing the chairman to sign the annual update to their four-year plan. For the Division of Human Services, there is a resolution for an agreement with Finger Lakes Community College for Employee Education and Training Program and Education Coordinator Services. This agreement also funds the EAP program, and the cost of this agreement will not exceed For Mental Health Services, there is a resolution to create a position for a part-time driver to ensure adequate coverage, and this position will be funded through state reinvestment funds available in the 2019 Mental Health Department budget. For Public Health, there is a resolution to seek bids for transportation services for the EI program and the preschool program. Contract will coincide with the 2019-2020 school year. And lastly, there is also a proclamation resolution for public health recognizing December 2nd through the 8th as National Influenza Vaccination Week, encouraging people to get their flu shot. That's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next, Supervisor Kaiser, Economic Development and Tourism.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The County Planning Board has had an at-large member resign, and I'd like, on behalf of the county, I'd like to thank that person for having served. A resident of Bonnie Bakes area of the town of Fayette has been recommended by the Fayette Town Board to fill the remainder of that term, and his name is Charles- Town Board to fill the remainder of that term, and his name is Charles T. Brady. Mr. Brady graduated from Clarkson University in 1971 and has served many New York State businesses in the areas of production and manufacturing engineering, and in lean operations, in the lean operations management, both domestically and internationally. The committee approved a resolution for tonight appointing Mr. Brady as the at-large member of the planning board. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Next, Supervisor Heisen, Indian Affairs. How do you have anything?
Oh, just a little bit here. I forgot we even had a meeting there, but we did talk about the petition they had from the Kugel Indian Nation employees supporting the Armed Security, which they call it now, not a police force. And we haven't got a response back yet about the federal license plate. Kind of quiet down there. I hope it's quiet. Mr. Zaro, is it quiet?
I was out of town a number of days this past month, but I haven't heard anything, so it is quiet. It's quiet and be. Is the chief here?
The chief still here? No, he's not.
No, he's not.
Quiet is good.
Quiet.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me. Next, Supervisor Renal, Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Yes, sir. Tonight, the board would consider a resolution approving the Public Safety Committee to accept four hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars in grant funding through the Strike Bar D12 Communication Grant Program. The purpose of this grant is to upgrade the Seneca County radio communication capabilities. There is no local match for this grant. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ernie. Next, Supervisor Lorenzetti, Vice Chair of Human Resources and Government Operations.
Thank you, Chairman Chipley. We met on Tuesday, October 23rd. There's going to be two items that are going to be on our agenda tonight. One is to introduce a local law establishing salaries for certain county officials for 2019, and the other is to adopt a revised sexual harassment policy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Supervisor Cromwider, Agriculture and Environmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on the 23rd and discussed the Kugel Lake Waterhead Network's testing results for the summer and the DEC report that identified Kugel Lake's large phosphorus load and some of the proposals to help remedy it. And since then, DEC's come out with a report that said Kugel Lake is the only lake in the Finger Lake that is continuously declining since the '70s with high nitrate loads. And they're looking for methods to remediate. Aaron Pruzini spoke, and they have plans ongoing to help remediate some of the effects of the phosphorus and nitrate loading in the Kugel Lake. I also got a letter, we all got a letter, to the Seneca County Board of Supervisors from Seneca White Deer that says, "On behalf of the All Volunteer Board of Directors of Seneca White Deer, a 501(c) not-for-profit organization, I want to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for your recent approval to provide Seneca White Deer with a very generous donation of ten thousand dollars. This donation will be used to pay off a significant part of our loan for our handicapped accessible tour funds. Many of you are aware that we have fought hard to preserve the white deer in the history of the former Seneca Army Depot. We now have a great opportunity to showcase a part of the depot to the world and to promote Seneca County and the Finger Lake in a very positive light. You have my word that we will do our best to achieve success. Thank you again for your support. Sincerely, Dennis Martin."
Thank you, Paul.
That's all I got.
Next, Supervisor Truff, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Works was up to a lot to balance with you. October 23rd, we met, and we passed five resolutions. One of those resolutions I will be asking to send back to committee. That will authorize the acquisition of New York State Route 414 sewer from the Senate County Industrial Agency. There was discussion on the 23rd about the facilities master plan and where everybody is going to end up, which we ended up having a special meeting over, which is coming next. And then we were given a water and sewer district operation update, the Senate County Water and Sewer list of accomplishments, month by month, last month in October, and installed new water and sewer hookups on Lake Shore Landing, Lot 44 and 45. Tom Corman attended training at Portland Water School to upgrade his certification to a D and C operator, and they did a lot of housekeeping and other things preparing for winter. On November 10th, we had one issue with the Vacant Team Committee and made the following recommendations to hire two psychiatrists for the winter months. Situation that came up was a possibility of terminating lease with Del Lago for the space in HHS Building and execute lease with Jack and Jill Childcare Centers for space and health community services building, which there will be more coming during committee's next month on that. And we reviewed the facilities master plan for mental health services and expanding and their needs and what we might need to do in the future for that. So there will be more coming on that during other committees. Thank you.
Okay. Also, we got good news today as far as a grant on bridge work in southern Seneca County. Sam, you want to give us a quick update on that?
Two New York State Bridges, Phase Two. The Seneca County got awarded five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Low Night Point Bridge. So yes, that's good news.
That's a start.
This is.
Thank you, Anne. Next, Supervisor Reynolds, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Chairman Chipley. We're trying to meet the Ways and Means Committee, approve the resolution that will amend the 2018 budget involving various account lines and departments. The tentative budget for 2019 was filed on November 7th, and we have a resolution on the agenda tonight to schedule a public hearing for the 2019 budget for December 11th, for the December 11th board meeting. The committee will be meeting tonight after the board meeting to review the tentative budget. We also scheduled a budget workshop for the committee meeting night on November 27th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Reports of special committees. Don't you have anything on the IDA?
They did not meet last month.
Ah, but they did have a couple special meetings.
They did. I was unable to attend them, but one was at the new HHS Building, and the other one was at South Seneca, and there was a long line of the...
About Seneca meetings we had previously.
And, you know, more additions to that. So look forward to seeing what a consultant ends up with for our Seneca County out of those special meetings. We'll be able to finish our paperwork now.
That's good. Like to move that one Seneca concept forward.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? I do have a, we received a letter from NISAC, and I'll turn this over to Supervisor Lorenzetti. And let you run it through Government Ops Committee. NISAC is looking for people, supervisors from counties to volunteer to be on standing committees. So it's a nice letter. Cindy, I'll give this to you and let you look into it, bring it through your committee process.
Very good.
Chairman's remarks. We have a lot of things in the pipeline tonight, so I will relinquish that tonight about county managers' remarks. Mitch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look forward after the full board's work is completed tonight when the Ways and Means Committee convenes to provide an initial overview of the tentative 2019 budget, and that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. County Attorney, Frank.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
You're making it easy. Margaret, Communications.
Communications, 168 through 175 has been received and filed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next, Ways and Means. Supervisor Reynolds, Number 14.
Board authorizes amendments to 2018 Seneca County budget.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 15, Supervisor Reynolds.
Clerk of the Board authorized and directed to advertise a public hearing for the 2019 budget.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. What's that date for the tentative budget hearing?
11.
December 11th? Now we have to prove our budget by the 20th, so it gives us a few extra days to tweak any things.
Yeah, December 11th. Yep. Right before the board meeting.
Very good. Next, Number 16, Supervisor Truff.
Authorized leasing agreement with around three various...
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 17, Supervisor Truff.
Supervisor, reclassified custodian position to senior custodian effective immediately.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? Bein' no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 18, Supervisor Truff.
This is the one we'd like to send back to committee after we do. Senate County Board Supervisors authorize acquisition of New York State 414 sewer from Senate County Industrial Development Agency and execution of intermunicipal agreement for wastewater containment treatment, operation, maintenance.
Okay, and you're...
I'll second that and make a motion to send it back to committee.
And you're waiting for another agency to act on that. Okay, on the motion to send back to committee?
He's seconded.
Outside.
Mr. Heisen.
Supervisor Heisen.
No, he seconded the...
Seconded, I seconded the motion.
Now moving to send it back to committee, Mr. Heisen has seconded the motion.
Thank you for keeping me straight.
I can prove that.
On the amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 19, Supervisor Truff.
Board approved bid from Elder W. Davis through U.S. Community to effect group at Seneca County Highway Barn.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here?
This being this year's budget or next year's budget?
Sam?
This year's. They're supposed to do it this year. I'm like, this is Jay Vajoski talking this year.
Does say in the second word as 2018 budget, so... Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 20, Supervisor Truff.
Board authorizes the implementation and funding in the first instance, 100% of federal aid in state market facility program, aid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project, and appropriated funds.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? This is also on this Mill Creek Bridge. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 21, Supervisor Renal.
County asks to use statewide communication grant with New York State Division of Homeland Security and Media Services for by emergency services and financial direction authorized amendment to 2019 Seneca County budget.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Bein' no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 22, Supervisor Carter.
Appoint Charles Brady to Seneca County Planning Board.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Bein' no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 23, Supervisor Lorenzetti.
Supervisors introduce proposed local law of 2018 entitled the Local Law to establish the salaries of certain county officials and set the date for the public hearing.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Kaiser.
I've been a critic in the past with lumping salary increases together as a group, not giving the supervisors any latitude to decide individual merit. I don't know if anyone else here looked at the recommendations that were done by the previous county manager. One of them is absolutely ridiculous, one of these very good job performance evaluations that makes no sense at all. I would like us to have a way to be able to vote on these individually. That's my opinion.
Okay, that would have been a good committee discussion point to be brought up before this was moved. Are you offering an alternate for the resolution?
Well, there are people on here that already had received salary increases last year, and I'm not, and also, every single person on here, I don't agree about the raises that are being proposed. My opinion, I guess I could make a motion to separate these out, but then I would have to ask Mr. Fisher, does that expose us to any kind of confidential personnel issues as we vote on each salary individually?
You're voting on a local law, so the local law can be amended. You can amend it. This is at the introductory stage, so you can move to amend it if that's what you're...
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend the local law to consider each salary individually.
Well, no.
Okay.
Right now, a local law establishes all of those salaries, okay? If you intend to have it deal with fewer, you can have it deal with fewer. You can move to amend it to add people. You can move to amend it to change the numbers, but you can't have a local law that says, there's no... The local law has to establish the salary, is basically what it's got to do. Local law isn't to say the board can establish a salary that's different. You need a local law that establishes the salary.
I understand that. So I will retract that motion request.
Thank you, and right now, all you're doing is moving this forward for a public hearing.
That is...
And then you can, if you feel you need to amend, when you actually vote on this after the public hearing, you can do it at that time. Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a question.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Lorenzetti.
Yeah, I don't know. You can't amend it though after you've already, now would be the time to do it, correct? Before the public hearing?
No, you can amend it at the time that you act on it. The trouble is that if you amend it, then you can't pass it the same night, because it has to be on the desks of the board for, I believe it's 10 days, in its final form for its acting. So if you come to the public hearing and you make amendments to this, you can do that, but you can't then vote on that the same night. You'd have to wait until the next board.
Okay, that makes sense.
Now's the time to amend it. So if you want to change something, you make a motion to amend this local law by changing a salary or removing a salary.
Or when you decide you do it the night of the public hearing, and then you have 10 days?
Well, then we have to start all over again and re-advertise it.
No, no, no. Okay, no.
No, no, no.
Okay, don't get it done.
You may amend it at the time that you're acting on the local law. You can't...
You can not pass it at the same time. You would then have to adjourn this to the next meeting or to a meeting at least 10 days later so that the law in its final form is on the desks of the board for at least
Okay, does anybody understand that?
So he can make amendments when we have the local law, the public hearing?
Or now, or now.
Dave, did you want to wait? Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, in the current form, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Number 24, Supervisor Lorenzetti.
Supervisors adopt policy number 510, decimal point 400, sexual harassment prevention policy, effective immediately.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I mean, all these points were brought up in the committee discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. How many pages in those lists? Still going. Okay, down to Number 25, Supervisor McGreevy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman of the Board of Supervisors authorized aside in the Office for the Aging annual update to the four-year plan for services and funding application.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? And no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 26, Supervisor McGreevy.
Authorize 2019 education contract to the Seneca County Division of Human Services and Finger Lakes Community College.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Number 27, Supervisor McGreevy.
Proclamation National Influenza Vaccination Week 2018, December 2nd through 2008, 2018.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? And no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 28, Supervisor McGreevy.
Number 28, Supervisors approve Mental Health Department's creation and filling of one part-time driver position in fiscal year 2019.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? And no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 29, Unfinished Business. Will there be any unfinished business to be brought before this board tonight? No? All right, will we now have new business?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Lorenzetti.
Yes, I do, Chairman. Before I read this resolution or motion, I would like to immensely thank Tony, Brandy, and Jeff Case for all the hard work and dedication that you guys gave to this county trying to fill Melissa's shoes. So that being said, I'd like to read this. Whereas local law 3 of 2018 designates Seneca County Board of Supervisors as the appointing authority of the position of Director of Emergency Management, and whereas Melissa Taylor resigned as Director of Emergency Management effective July 3rd, 2018, and whereas the position of Director of Emergency Management remains vacant, and whereas Ms. Taylor has requested to withdraw her resignation, and whereas Seneca County Policy 101, 606 allows for withdrawal of a resignation with the consent of the appointing authority, and whereas the Seneca County Board of Supervisor, find supervisors, find it in the best interest of the county to consent to the withdrawal of Mrs. Taylor's resignation, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors accepts the withdrawal of Melissa Taylor's resignation as Director of Emergency Management, and therefore be further resolved that Ms. Taylor's absence during the period of July 3rd, 2018 through November 19, 2018 be designated as an unpaid leave of absence.
That could support. Okay, in order to, since this didn't go through a committee, first thing you have to do is ask for Rule 29.
Yes, sir. I'm asking for Rule 29.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for Rule 29. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, on the motion that Supervisor Lorenzetti, any discussion?
I'll second it.
Already seconded.
Already, yeah.
Any discussion? Supervisor...
I'd just like to say I think it's in the best interest of every resident of this county to have Melissa Taylor back.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You can clap louder. Don't be afraid.
Is she still working in Texas?
Yep.
She'll be here November 19.
She'll be here November 19.
Okay, I guess we'll see her then.
Can't wait.
Next, matter of business, Supervisor Reynolds.
Mr. Chairman, I am with the board entered an executive session under sections on 105.1c and 105.1app of Public Officer's Law to discuss information related to a criminal investigation which would imperil effective law enforcement. Disposed and discussed to the employment industry of a person, and the both board and the board invite into the executive session the following persons: county manager, county attorney, sheriff, undersheriff, lieutenant investigator Thompson, and the district attorney. And the board remain in executive session under section 105.1e of Public Officer's Law in order to discuss the collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of Civil Service Law, and the board invite into the executive session the following persons: the county manager, the county attorney, the county personnel officer, and the sheriff.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to go into executive session.